Hi Prince, good evening from my side.
Hello, hello. I say we give it a couple of minutes, see who shows up. And then if nobody shows up, I'm gonna jump over to the chaos meeting anyway. Um, so we will see. It tends to be for Linux Foundation meetings that like June and July gets really quiet. But last time I was here, there were like eighteen people on the call, so it's pretty active.
Maybe they'll just be little bit late.
Yeah. But yeah, let's give it another minute or two, but if nobody else shows up, then I think. Um, well, I guess I'll state a quick like matter of action. So Ajiro and I were hoping to get started with a like getting started with OpenSSF blog. Um, and I went to the education SIG for that and they said, yes, we definitely want that. But we would love for that to come through the bear working group. So I said, okay, I'll show up to this meeting. And so now we're here. But yeah, it may, it's, we're also like just the week before the Denver Open Source Summit, so people are pretty busy. But go ahead Prince.
Yeah, I was about to mention that. Seems that we will have maybe for the uh in preparation for the uh US and Asia. That could be the reason for the new turn out.
Yeah, that sounds about right. I know this working group only meets uh once a month. So I think my plan, because we're like three minutes in and it's just the three of us. My plan now is to uh go ahead and reach out on the Slack. And see if we can get that blog started there where people are paying more attention. Um, but hopefully, I would really expect this uh to pick back up next month. Um, because I thought this was a great group, so I hope it's not dead. Um, but on my side, I'm gonna jump off because I have two co-meetings right now. So I'm gonna jump into the chaos meeting, but good to see you all and I will see you next time this meeting runs.
Alright, bye.
See you soon.
Alright, bye.
Um, Ajiro.
Hi Prince, hi.
Nice meeting you, this I think.
Same here.
First time I'm seeing you on the call. Well, I haven't been joining before sometimes, but.
I cannot hear you clearly, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me clearly now?
Uh, yeah, a bit, but it's quite, it's broken a little bit. You're in Nigeria, I guess.
No, I'm in Ghana.
Oh, yeah, in Ghana. I'm sorry, I just assumed the Nigeria. So I think I've joined this call once before now. I don't know if it is this or the education call. But I have joined one of them. But I came here, as Sal said, I came here to join, so she introduced me to write a blog post for. Them, that's why I had to join today. And maybe unfortunately, people are not going to come on this call. So like she said, I would drop the message on the Slack channel.
Sounds good. Well, myself, I've been engaged with it. OpenSSF for some time. So, yeah.
For how long?
I think I came in contact with the started contributing to those. Say it's time or five, ten, twenty, twenty-three, July.
Oh, that's, that's a long time.
Yeah, but you. Yeah, well. Um, I've been in the, the bear working group, it used to be the DEI. Working group. I don't know, um. Yes, she mentioned she may be late for the call. She has a meeting thirty minutes. A thirty minute conflict with uh. Group meeting, so. I'm guessing she might join later, but I don't know at this point, maybe, oh, Marcela is here.
Hello, sorry, I'm a little, I was hoping other folks would be here too. I mean, you were all here, I mean, my other co-chairs. Um, yeah.
Sal joined again, so he said, well, uh, we send your friends.
Who joined?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, I just didn't hear who you said joined.
Sal, Sal, Sal came in.
Oh, Sal. Yeah, they, yeah.
Most of them.
What I, so. Uh.
Ajiro.
Okay. Um, so. What I was going to suggest for today, even though it's just the three of us, I think we can brainstorm a little. Um, I'll keep it short since you two have already been waiting. Um, so I. Do apologize for that.
Don't worry, we be doing it. I think it's your time.
Yeah. Um, alright, so. Not many of us here. And then, welcome Ajiro, um.
Hi, hi, please can I get him so pronounced currently?
Can you get what, sorry?
Your name, is it Masila?
Mar- Marcela, yeah.
Marcela, that's, that's nice. My name is Ajiro.
Hi.
I try not to.
It's totally fine, um, I've heard many worse pronunciations of my name. Um, you're, you're doing fine. Um, yeah, do you want to share a little bit about uh yourself, um, Ajiro and? Um, yeah. Just quickly introduce yourself.
Hi, so my name is Ajiro Organikume, I'm from Nigeria and I'm into the cybersecurity space. I'm trying to like get some open source contributions done on cybersecurity in whichever way I can help. I joined the education seg um group and I joined your call a couple of times. But Sal brought me here because I think we had a conversation on making a blog post. And they said, yeah, this call is the best place for me to do my introduction and go ahead with talking about making the blog post. So yeah, that's it, but Sal brought me anyways.
Yeah, no, Sal is great, um. So I'm, I'm glad they did that. Um, welcome to, to the bear working group, uh, I wish there were more people here to welcome you. Um.
That's fine.
There's, yeah, we have a conference next week and so. I think people are just very busy with that, preparing and all of that. Um, but yeah, so if you want to talk about the blog post first, um, I'm happy to do that. Um. I will just share the. Meeting notes with you, so um I already added your name to the list. Um, but if you want to share your email address or your uh, you know, um GitHub ID. That, that would be fine too. Um, yeah, so.
Share that in the comments.
Um, share that in the, so I just shared a link to a Google Doc. Um.
Okay.
And so if you go to the meetings list, the June seventeen one. Um, at the top, there's always a list of attendees. Um. And so I added your name at the bottom. Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to go through that, I opened, okay, yep, 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 that works, I've seen it. Yeah. I'm doing that now.
Alright, um, I'll just do the scraping today. Um, and so. Where are the agenda today, um? I'm adding your topic of the blog post and then I will also add. Um. The uh. Send a, oops, demo booth. Um, slides, so. Yeah, let's see. Um. Alright. So, um, Ajiro, what kind of, um. I guess, are, are you looking to write a blog post about a specific topic already? Do you have something in mind? Or are you um just trying to learn more about the process of writing? Um, a blog post for OpenSSF, um, but you also are looking for a topic, um. Yeah, how, how can we help you basically? Um.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so uh for the blog post, uh I, Sam, I have had a conversation about um introduction to the OpenSSF space. But I am not sure, I am not so rigid about whatever the blog post is going to be about. So I am open to hearing suggestions on what the blog post is going, should be about. Anything that would be of best interest to the space. I'm sure definitely going to make some research and get to um get that, but.
Okay, um.
I don't.
So I think there's a couple of things we could do. One is, um, if you want to write something about. Kind of your personal experience and just share that as like an experience uh or like developer story. Um, I think that could be, that could be a really good topic. We don't publish those very often, just because most people. Uh, prefer to write these like very technical or not very, but more technical uh posts. Um. If you're looking for. A topic about specific projects. Um, I wonder if. It would make sense to work with the uh marketing group actually. Because they, I think they keep track of specific topics they want to cover. So actually, let me see, sometimes they even publish these lists. The. Yeah, they don't seem to have published any particular list right now, but I'm sure if we ask them, then they would. Um, so. Topic, um. Um, so yeah, I think what we could do is. Um, I can put you in touch, Ajiro, with the. Um, with the marketing team to see what topics they have. Um, if they have any topics and then um if it's something you need to research, then I think. Uh, that would, that'd be good, um.
Okay, that, that works, that works, could I text you on Slack?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, maybe. I'll reach out to you on Slack, so when you, um, I said after the call, I could reach out to you on Slack. So that when you get in contact with the person and you want to connect me to them, I'll be so much valuable to accept that.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Um, so. Okay, that sounds good. Um.
Well, um, before then, if I have something, if I come up with something very interesting that I think that can work. After maybe my conversation with Sal, I would let you know too.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I was thinking of putting you in touch with them today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That, that's a very quick message for me, um, so, yeah. I don't expect that they will be available immediately, just because of the conferences that are happening this week and. Excuse me, this weekend, next week, but um. Yeah, hopefully, hopefully we can still just get this, uh, get this going. Um, so that you're not, you're not waiting too long. Um.
Alright.
Um, yeah, and so they, they're extremely helpful, um. I think even to start with, it's just enough to. Um, write something pretty short, have you looked at the um blog guidelines?
Okay, not really, I really have not gone through any blog guidelines because uh this suggestion was burnt up lately. But I could go through all of that, is, is this something you could pull me up to, so I'll go through it, I'll see. Um, what should I do?
So just share the link um in the chat here, yeah.
All this.
The blog I find, yeah. Um, yeah.
Okay.
So, that can also just give you an idea of how the actual review process and all of that works. Um.
I don't know, I guess my network is bad because it's taking a little bit of time to load, so, but I got the link.
Oh, okay, um, I'll also share that in the. Um, sure that I know, I don't. Then. Yeah, so, um, I'll reach out to you, like I said, today, uh, sorry if there's background noise. The, um. I don't have any other topics off the top of my head. I think an interesting upcoming topic for this working group could be. Um, just our, our experiences at the demo booth in the upcoming conference. Where several of sort of going to be uh just talking to conference attendees every day. Um. And so that could be a nice sort of, um. How should I say, like summary recap of conversations we had. Um, I think that's an interesting topic to uh potentially write about as, as well and to share. Um, but that, because that hasn't happened yet, we don't actually have the, the content for that. Um.
Okay, I do not expect you to have like something off your head to tell me about a blog post. I would gain that time, so I really do not expect you to have that. Maybe when we have a conversation, we talk through it, maybe I get something and you get something. We could put heads together, pick a particular topic I would talk on and I would move with that. Well, right now, I do not expect you to have something on your head because you've been giving suggestions which are highly helpful and that's fine.
Yeah, thank you for that, um, yeah, I just, I am very much a planner, so I like to. My mind just immediately goes to, ah, what could we do, so, um. Topic, um. I'll just write it down so I don't forget, um. Okay, um, cool, so do you have anything else on this topic before we move on to the next uh agenda item?
Hmm, not really, I don't think I do. If I do, I'll surely reach out to you, but I don't think I have any question right now or any contributions to make.
Alright, thank you, um. So I'm actually going to move your topic up Prince, the topic, uh, the tips of the mu- month. Um. Because mine is a bit more open-ended, so what did you want to discuss about this?
Yes, so I, I, I checked the, the document, the Google Doc and. And there are suggestions from both here and Stacy and myself, I haven't been really. Um, active about, so I was hoping we could use this good call to come up with sample topics or topics to. Consider for the tip of the month. I don't know, that's, that's something we can discuss with you.
I didn't hear you Prince, I don't know. I don't know why I'm finding difficult to hear you clearly, I can hear you, but I cannot hear you clearly, so I'm not getting what you're saying.
Yeah, so I was saying, we have a, a document for uh working on the tip of the month. Do you have what we call the tip of the month, um, visually? Um. A tip we give out to, um. Folks involved in open source or to advise a very important process. Uh, we should use a fantastic people and. Uh, we also for folks in cybersecurity, you know. So, um, that's what I'm talking about. We do not have a topic for the this month, tip of the month. So. Yeah, I was hoping we could use this, um. Uh. Group call to discuss that or to come up with some new topics for the support of the month. Alright. So.
I've literally just taken the topics from the, very lazily, I've taken the topics from the past office hours. Um.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we wanted to start anyway. Um, is taking, um. I guess, and this part I think is a bit difficult, so I don't know how reasonable it is to do. Um, someone was hoping to take, um, Prince, you may remember Paris, who was joining some of these meetings last year. Um.
Yes.
Yeah, so his idea had been to find the transcript of these different recorded calls. And essentially from the transcripts, just extract. Uh, sort of interesting tips that were shared, um. Yeah, so I don't know if you want to do that, um. We can, we.
Like you were saying. Okay, please go.
Um, yeah, all I was gonna say was, we can uh work with uh Redden, um, who handles our YouTube videos. And see, um, he can give us the transcripts. Uh, and then we could start doing that, that extraction. Uh. Like extracting some text and, um. Yeah, getting, getting those. Uh.
So would you want to add that to the. Loads, so.
Uh.
If you can do that, I mean, the word.
Oh, yeah, if you want to add that to the meeting, that's fine. Um. Yeah, if you can, um. It can. Doesn't, yeah, either way. Um. Yeah, and then I'm trying to see if we have other topic ideas. Hmm. Found a few more from our, uh. My topics ideas. Um. The maintainers one.
Really?
Harmony had last week or last month. Yeah, so hopefully, um. Hopefully these topics can help you get started Prince on, on this. Um.
Okay.
And.
So, um. Like, what, what usually happens? Or what should, what should we do for it? So when there's a tip of the month, we reach out to the marketing folks and like they come up with a blog post or. Especially I'm really ambitious or something about it, or do we do it ourselves?
Um, usually they prefer if we do, if we at least do the first draft ourselves and then they will, they will make edits and suggestions. For, for how to make it better. Um, and tip of the month really doesn't have to be very long, right? Um, the three things that I think you need to go on the tip of the month is, I mean, the, the tip first and then. Uh. Who's, who's edit, um. And if we want to include a short. And if we want to include a shorts, um I don't wanna say bio because bio ends up being too long, but if we want to include like a short, you know, say, I said a tip of the month and then said, oh, Marcella said this and she's a researcher at Intel, right? I think just having those three pieces of information, the tip, who said it and kind of where are they doing there, or where are they working, something like that. And could be, could be good, so. Um, does that make sense or were you thinking something else?
That's, that's fine. Yeah.
Hi Harmony. Um, we are currently discussing the, how do you get the first tip of the month ready for, I guess July would be good, would be a good timeframe. Right?
Hi, I'm sorry for
No worries.
Welcome.
Yeah, and let me also actually Prince add the uh, the link to the office hours. Here, um
I am, my other meeting was very quick, I'm here again.
Hi Sal.
Hello, good to see you.
Yeah, I heard you joined early and I joined late, so sorry to miss you before, but thanks for being back. Um, we're currently discussing the tip of the month. Uh, which is a activity we've been wanting to kick off. And Prince is taking the lead on that, so, yeah.
Okay, very cool.
I'm picking the lead on this.
Sorry, what was that?
I, I mentioned that I wouldn't really say I have the lead on this.
Yep.
Welcome to open source, you're now the lead.
Yeah.
It's driving this, um so, um anyway, the uh, the list of topics is there. Um, yeah, is there anything else that you need then Prince to, to get this started?
Yeah, so you did mention, um, last time we had a call that it has to be ready by the 23rd of, of the month, isn't for every month, 523, is that when we should, this should go live, the tip of the month should go live?
Um, it's a good question. Um I mentioned the 23rd. Sorry, I'm typing, um I mentioned the 23rd because that's when the Open Source Summit North America starts next week. And so it would have been kind of fun to line, line it up with that date. And given that that's six days away, uh, that may be a bit challenging. Uh, so what we can maybe do is for, for this coming month, basically, uh let's just try to have it ready by, I mean, we can push it out by a week, I don't think that lining it up with Open Source Summit is all that crucial. Um, and yeah, to, to really answer your question, no, it will not always be on the 23rd, but we should pick like the last Monday of every month or something like that. So the dates will change, but the time we have to work on it should be relatively constant. Uh, go ahead, Sal.
I love this idea of the tip of the month. Um, and I'm on this call today because I reached out to the education SIG and I said it's been a while since there's been a like intro to open SSF, uh, like blog. Um, and I would love for a Jiro mostly to take the lead on that, but I'll be helping them to put it together. Um, so I'd love to pull resources from here in the education SIG to put that together. And if we can coordinate that with, uh the like tips starting to go out, I think that would be great, um, cause it's a shared core audience. Um, but I'll also take any advice that you have in the chat around what you want to be highlighted in a getting started with open SSF blog cause we're trying to put one together.
Yeah, I really like that idea and we were talking a little bit about um, potential topics before, um, getting started in open SSF is absolutely one that we should cover, um, because a lot of projects have changed, we are getting several new projects this year. And it's just becoming very hard to navigate. Um, for some extra context to Sal, we have been planning a sort of monthly welcome calls to open a stuff where, um just different sort of working group, uh, sort of chairs and whatnot come together, projects, maintainers. Kind of present an overview of what is happening at open SSF and um, the target audience is also just folks trying to get into it's, yeah, try, trying to get into open source and start to contribute to different projects. So, um, I think that's aligned really, really well. Um, and I will make a note also that, um intro to open SSF is, um, another great topic, yeah, and so lining that up would work really well. I realistically don't think that a blog would come out for the end of June, again, because I expect marketing to just be really busy all week, next week. And they need to give, like, the TAC does review the blogs whenever possible. Um, not that I think there's going to be any issue with such a host, it's just, it's a couple of hoops. So, um I think we can go back to the marketing team, um, how long do you think it'll take you and Azir to put this together, Sal?
So I would say, give us like a week and a half or so, I was thinking a good published date would be like mid-July and it does tend to take about a week and a half after I send it to open SSF to like formally review it. Yeah. But, uh, yeah, I think it's more important, in my opinion, to make sure that we actually cover like all of the new updates, like I would want to include the tips that we're putting in there and any of the new projects, make sure we get that right. Um, so as long as it's inside of July, I think that's a good deadline.
Okay, yeah, and I think that that also gives Prince enough time to put together that tip of the month post. That will go out either before or after, I don't, I definitely don't want to distract, uh, or like detract rather, um, from, from the blog post with the tip of the month, so we, we can see how we can coordinate that. But, yeah, so does, can we just say tentatively July 15 or something like that?
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Um, I'll start locking that up with a Jiro and then I'll be coordinating between here and the education SIG to make sure that we like really have everything covered. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think next best steps on this are, I'll pull together a document and then we can follow up on Slack, is there a specific place within Slack where you think this would fit best to get like eyes on initial reviews before we send it off for formal review?
Yes, um, if you can reach out to Sally Cooper. Um, Sally Cooper or, um, gee, sorry, I'm blinking on, on their name. Angela Lu. Sally Cooper has always been our main contact person for uh, marketing things, but I know Angela also, she actually handles quite a bit of the, um, social media aspects, so.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, and happy to connect you also, um, if for some reason you can't find them, but, um yeah, great, so, um Prince, I guess then what this means for the first tip of the month is uh, the topic that, just so it's, um a good companion to the, to the blog. Uh, the topic should probably be, I'm interested in getting involved in open SSF, where should I start? Um does that sound good?
Perfect, that's, that's really perfect, and I aligns with the blog post, and sorry.
Okay. Um, so then we may want to approach this one a little bit differently, just because we don't have previous office hours where this has been discussed and where we could um, take some tips that were already shared there. Um, so for this one, Prince, you'll probably want to reach out to, uh, Crowe. Um, I'm happy to share something, but I think there are other people that should, uh, should speak as well. Um, it's really, we're really just looking for, for a tip, right? So I think getting one person's, one person's perspective for now will be, will be good. Um, maybe if it's first, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, the What's in the Source podcast is also a great resource for working on this because I've listened to some of the episodes and a lot of the folks that have featured on the episodes are, they, they give and they have some great tips for getting involved in open source in general and especially with open SSF, so it's like Mike Leiberman and some other folks that I listen to and a few things to say about that, so I think that would also be a great resource and I, I will as well reach out to them in the regard for.
Yeah, that's a great idea, I just wrote that down. Um so, yeah, if you can reach out to any of them, that, that would be good. Uh yeah. And so I guess what I was going to say to you though is, um, for a tip of the, for the first tip of the month, because it's um, a pretty big question. I think we should, um uh, how should I say, I think we should maybe, if you want to, if you talk to multiple people and they all have very good sort of different tips and that show the different perspectives of people in open SSF. Um then we can include more than one tip, right? Um, it doesn't just have to be a single tip either. Um, yeah, so whatever we find, but I think either way, uh um, you and I Prince can, can coordinate to to get that ready.
Sure, that is fine.
Alright, um so
It's Sal, Sal wants to do same.
Yeah, just a quick note on that, um, if we're preparing it for like the end of this month, early July, generally for those kind of things, I will always just pass by the education SIG because it's where Crowe and David Wheeler are all at and all those types. Those are the two names, the two people that I would specifically make sure to reach out to. Um, and, uh it depends on the audience that we're really tailoring the tips to, if they're like general cybersecurity audiences. Um, I will say this tips idea is a good one and if, uh there's a lot of stuff going on around, uh, like tips for maintainers that might be useful, so I might pay attention to like implementing the new baseline, um, which is like an extension from the open SSF scorecard essentially. Um, it ties back pretty well, gives them a tool to use. Um, but, uh, yeah, my, my cheat code for all of this is anytime you want to put out something that's educational for open SSF, go to that SIG, they're always, they're always there and they're always very friendly.
Thank you, yeah, I have to admit, I have not attended the education SIG myself, um, but yeah. Um, Prince, do you think you'll have time to attend uh, one of the upcoming SIG meetings, the education SIG meetings? Great. Okay, because yeah, that's, that's a really, really good suggestion to, um, to talk to them about that, um okay. Um okay, I think for the tip of the month though, I think we've decided to, to move it out to July as well, just so that um, Prince has enough time to, to get all the, the content ready. Um, get that reviewed as well and all of that. Um, so we do have some more time. And so Sal, I saw that you posted, so the next education SIG is, isn't, is not until late July, it seems.
Yeah, it's in a week and a half.
Oh, okay, the comment said July, so I was like, oh, there's still, gotcha, so that's June, no worries.
Good call.
Yeah. I would assume it's, it's on the, um on the calendar, then again, June 25th is still the open source summit, so I don't know if, uh yeah, I don't know if they're still going to be hosting that one. Great, yeah, thank you, so, um, if they meet every two weeks and it's not June 25th, then two weeks after that, that should still be enough time. Right, um, anything else on tip of the month before we move on to the last topic today?
Yes, so, um, I just wanted to confirm, we have a schedule for or we do not have a schedule yet, sorry, uh, but I'm seeing that in the document, so should we have a fixed schedule for when the tip of the month should go live each month and um other things as well, should we not like a schedule for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably should, so, um right now I have the first tip of the month scheduled for July 15. It's a bit of an arbitrary date, so we can pick July 15, we can pick a, a week before um, or a week after. Um but essentially we want to maybe pick a recurring day of the week every month, so like I said before second Tuesday of every month or last Monday of every month, right? Um, it is completely up to us to pick and I don't have Um, it is completely up to us to pick and I don't have, I honestly don't have strong opinions other than this shouldn't be on a Friday. Um. Yeah. So if you have a preference Prince for like what works best for you to get these ready, um, then I say we go with that. Uh, and if you don't have a preference, then we can just pick an arbitrary one and stick to that. Um.
Yeah, we, we can come up with that, that's a good.
Okay.
And I was just, I was just, yeah.
Okay, so do we want to say the office hours are typically on the fourth Thursday of every month, so maybe if we do this like the second Tuesday of every month or something? Um, or second Monday, would that, would that work?
That's fine. So, I'll go, I'll go ahead and check for the next few months and with that in discussion.
Okay, so the second Monday of July is the fourteenth. Yeah, that's a good call, we should settle on that now. Um. All right. And we have been quite uh, I'll just say negligent over office hours these past few months and for that I also very deeply apologize. Um, getting speakers has been quite challenging, to be honest. Um. But, that, we'll pick it back up in July, I think, at this point.
Me too, I apologize for that as well. I did mention I would say help with the search for speakers and I haven't been so sure with that. So I do apologize as well.
Yeah, it, yeah, it, it is what it is, um. I think, um, hopefully during the actual conference next week, we can organize a small coffee chat or something. I'll talk to Stacy again and see if we can do something there and um, it's not ideal because a lot of people who will not be there in person can't join, but maybe, hey, maybe we can even like stream it on, on Zoom or something. Um, and, and make it sort of remote friendly. I like that idea, actually. Um.
That sounds really good, giving that I have the opportunity to have, and I would really love it. Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that the talks, the talks won't be live streamed, but they are all recorded, so you can go later and, um, view them on YouTube. Uh, my idea here is more to just have a Zoom call during, during the meetup. Um. All right, we have nine minutes left, so, um. Uh, me and Jacenia and I don't know if anybody else here is attending Open Source Summit North America. Um, we're going to be volunteering at the Open SSF booth, the conference next week. And as part of that, um, we had been it's been recommended that we prepare a couple of slides to just talk about what is the Bear Working Group. Um, you know, what are, what, what's our mission, what's our vision, those kinds of, um, sort of um, general, general things. Um, but I wanted to ask everyone here also if there is anything specific you want to share about the Bear Working Group that we can include in the slides, uh, that we show at the, at the booth. Um, so I'm thinking things like, um, you know, why do you enjoy the, the Bear Working Group or is there something um, that really, um, sort of I, I guess, maybe something that may encourage other folks to also join uh, the Bear Working Group, um, just based on your own experiences. Um. If you don't want to share it right now, that's also fine, you can message me on Slack. Um, if you want to share something and I'll ask if you want your name, uh, shared or not as well. Um, I do want to be respectful of people's privacy. Um, but yeah, do you folks have any ideas or, or kind of thoughts about what else we could cover um, about this working group to an Open Source Summit kind of general audience? Um, what do you want them to know about, about this? We'll stop talking.
Is there a specific, uh, SubSlack for, uh, Bear on Open SSF?
Um. Substack?
SubSlack.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um. Yes, there's the, um, hashtag WorkingGroup-Bear. Um, let me post that here as well. Let's misspell that. Um, so that's the main channel, we post things and um. We don't have private channels at the moment, um, we've talked about creating a couple um additional work, or additional channels that are sort of, uh. Yeah.
No, I think this works, um, but if you just send out a quick message saying you're looking for quotes for the summit, I will throw it there.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we're not looking for, um, anything like too long either, right, or anything like that, just something we can kind of just keep on a rolling slideshow, um, while we're, while we're at the, at the booth. Um, great, yeah, thank you for that suggestion. And I will, I will, uh, post my request there. Um. Yeah, any other thoughts, suggestions, comments, quotes? Okay. Um, one thing I will say is that uh, even if you think you don't have an important quote, um, you probably do have an important quote to share. Um, so, I'm totally up to you, totally voluntary, um, but I know, um some people, uh may not feel one hundred percent comfortable. Um. All right, so um, with that um, I guess I'll quickly summarize what we talked about today, so, um. We talked about, um, Ajiro and Sal's, uh, blog post. Um, about the intro to, to the Open SSF. Um, we talked quite a bit about the first tip of the month as well. Um, and that should be going live uh, in mid-July as well. Um. And, uh, I guess finally we'll be uh, organizing some Open Source Summit, uh, North America. Hopefully a meetup and then also this demo booth volunteering, uh, materials, so. Um, any final thoughts before we or I give you time back? Okay, if not, um, thank you all so much for joining, um, it's been a good discussion. And I'll see you in two weeks at the next meeting.
Sounds good, see you all soon.
Bye-bye. You all have a great day.
You too. It's morning where you are, sorry.
Yep, it is nine AM for me almost.
It's about four PM, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you still have a, a little bit of a day left.
Alright. Have a good day.
You too, thank you, talk to you soon.
Thanks, bye. Bye.